Good evening, welcome. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Larry, do the honors, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Well, who is that guy? I know. I just...
Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on-demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently recorded meetings and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. First on the agenda, no community announcements. We'll go right to our minutes. Open session minutes, February 18th, 2020.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
I have a motion and a second and any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing unanimous? Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Troop 57 requests for use at Town Hall entrance, Scout Zachary Solomon. Zachary, come on up.
So, right there. Right there. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Hello. My name is Zachary Solomon. I'm a junior in high school and from Troop 57 Rockland. I am currently working on my Eagle Scout, and my project will be building multiple shelving units in the high school bandroom to hold music and some drama equipment. I am working on my fundraising right now, and for my fundraising, I am selling Hilliard's chocolate bars and also holding a clothing drive with Savers. The reason I would like to have the Town Hall as a drop-off location next Saturday, March 14th, is because it's a center of town, everyone knows it, and it's a great location because, yeah, it's a great location. And, thank you.
Thank you.
What time will you be having the...
Um, I think nine to 12.
Nine to 12?
How much did we normally charge Chris Griffith out there?
I don't know. I thought you set the rates.
There you go. Zachary, how are you gonna get the word out to everybody?
Um, I have some flyers that I'm gonna be passing around.
Excellent.
Okay. Anybody have an issue with that?
No, I think it's a awesome idea.
Great idea. I think it's a great idea.
Absolutely.
Make a motion, then we allow them to do it. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? There you go, you're offside, Zach.
You all the best.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Another Eagle Scout is just a feather in our cap. Thank you.
All right. We're gonna take the agenda slightly out of order. We're gonna pass over Ocean State Job Lot's request real quick, and we're gonna go to Rockland Little League Opening Day Parade, Saturday, April 25th. Ken Rau, Brian Martin, come on up.
Good evening. How are you tonight?
Doing good.
Good. Yes, we'd like to have our annual parade on Saturday, April 25th, starting at 10:00 AM, down to Jefferson School and finishing up at the stadium. Last year, unfortunately, we got rained out, so we're hoping Mother Nature cooperates a little better this year, and, 'cause I know the kids really enjoy it.
Still doing that with girls softball?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. We try to get it all together and...
How many kids do you anticipate in this year?
Um, hopefully as many as we had last year. Last year, we wound up with 219, just for Little League.
Is enrollment up or...
It was up 25% last year.
Oh, that's good, 'cause you've seen a...
Yeah. It was going out, but changed the way we got the word out a little bit. Hopefully it continues. We're a little low right now, but we look back and a lot of people signed up late last year, too, so...
And you coordinated with police and fire already?
I will contact them.
You will contact them?
I contacted Rich Furlong, Park's Department, and he said, "Make sure you get approved."
And I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second that. The Little League Parade of Saturday, April 25th at...
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM.
Okay, I have a motion in two seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Seeing unanimous? Thanks, guys. Good luck.
We'll hope for a nice sunny day. I'm not turning on the...
I'll do it. I'll do it. I guess I'll bring it.
I think I threw it...
I do remember that.
That's pathetic. I'm gonna say, "Bob, to me."
All right, next on the agenda, Ocean State Job Lot requests to open Easter Sunday, April 12th, 2020. So, I received an email from a manager at Ocean State. It says, "Good morning. Ocean State Job Lot has made a corporate decision and would like to open and operate for business on Easter Sunday this year. I'm inquiring on the option to do this in Rockland, Mass. Can you please let me know if, one, we can be open for business on Easter Sunday in the town, and, two, are there any restrictions if we are able to open and operate on this holiday? There are no state restrictions, as most of our other Mass stores will be open, but understand and will comply if there are restrictions per town ordinance." Doug, did you find anything?
We don't have anything.
I know. No, we don't have an ordinance.
That's what I thought, so...
So, they can open. They can do it.
Regular hours?
Well, I mean, whatever hours they, I guess they're gonna set for that.
Whatever the state allows and whatever their corporate policy is.
So, it sounds like you guys are open to this. I would say just make, whoever makes the motion, make it that any other business that's willing, that's looking to do this as well, can do it as well.
Do we technically even make a motion on this? Because it's not, we don't...
Yeah, it's not even...
We're not having, Doug.
It's a state.
Right.
It's state-regulated, and we don't have a bylaw, so...
Not like a package store or something.
And we've also got a letter written here from Deputy Chief of Police Jerry Romo saying they don't have any issues with it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't even think we should make a motion.
I suppose, I guess we just...
I agree with that. I mean, why weigh in if all of our stuff is silenced on it?
Yeah, there you go.
So, we appreciate them reaching out anyway?
Definitely.
And enjoy working on Easter Sundays. It's always fun.
Yep.
Next on the agenda, appointment for youth commission three-year term, Mike Rapel, 83 South Tegel Street. Mike, come on up.
So, yeah, my term has come to an end in a couple weeks here at the school committee, and I decided not to run and wanted to still be involved. And the youth commission and I have had a longstanding relationship since I was five, so at this point, I think, you know, it's a good fit for me and what I think of it for the town, so I think I could bring a lot to it and use my experience to help it out, so...
They wouldn't be able to, uh, not really...
I think there's no conflict of interest in it.
So, I don't, I don't know...
One elected position and one appointed.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know if you can do that.
Yeah, yeah. One elected and one appointed.
One elected and one appointed? Okay.
Yeah. So... And I don't, in checking all my stuff with school committee and stuff, the youth commission doesn't really fall under our purview, you know? The daycare, different story if it was a daycare position.
Youth commission is in a school thing? I have two meetings left in school.
Yeah, makes perfect sense to me. I mean, you know it, you understand it, you're passionate about it, so being the win-win-win.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mike to the three-year term on the youth commission. Second.
Make a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Seeing unanimous?
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks for your continued service. Thanks. Next on the agenda, special and annual town meeting warrant. Doug?
Thank you. So, I thought it would be helpful to go over a comprehensive list of all the articles that we're looking at for town meeting. And I also asked Derek Ewell from the Community Preservation Committee to come in, and you can see he's here tonight, so he's graciously come in. I thought he could also go over the CPC recommended applications, 'cause they're better able to speak to it than me. I'm happy to have you go first, but I mean, I kinda had you at the end, because that's sort of the line in the warrant, if you don't mind sticking around a little bit. You're good? All right, so...
Derek, if you and Steve want to come up here in cases, you know, we can just go right back, right to you guys.
If there's any questions, yeah.
Steve, if you could just pull a trailer over next to him.
So, would you like me to start at the end, or should I...
No, no, you can start at the beginning, and then, you know, we'll just flow into that as opposed to calling them up separately, you know?
So, I guess the first thing to highlight is, I put a header at the top of the document just indicating when the warrant closes. So, every, you know, certain towns do it a little bit differently, the way it looks like Rockland does it. It's written right in on the charter that the warrant closes 50 days prior to the town meeting. So, in talking to town council, if you count back, we're going with Friday, March 13th. I don't believe you need to take an affirmative vote to actually close the warrant. I think that'll just automatically happen on, excuse me, automatically happen on that date. So, I've been working a lot with the town accountant on this, and the way we have this structured right now is the first page are the list of articles for the special town meeting, and then the page, the back of it, the second page, are the list of the annual town meeting articles. As you know, it's essentially one town meeting, you know, held on one day, so it's sort of a, some towns refer to it as a special within an annual. And the benefit of doing a special town meeting on that day is you can make adjustments for the current fiscal year, not for the following fiscal years, is normally the case. A number of these items, like for example, you know, take the first item, number one, which are some corrections to our current year FY20 budget, and we talked about some of these in prior meetings, they total 671,000. That needs to be done at the special, 'cause we need to correct the current year budget. As you go down, essentially, most of all these other articles are what I would call capital items, so they're, you know, requests to, you know, buy a fire truck, you know, et cetera. So, these items, you know, would be preferable to do in a special, because the money would be available immediately, it's coming from pre-cash. Departments could act on that quicker, start doing the procurement, it makes the accounting easier for the accounting department. But if you really look at it closely, again, because of our town charter, which has some quirks to it, the town charter says, articles on a special town meeting warrant can only be for emergencies, an emergency declaration. So, we're gonna go over this list very carefully, Biz and I. My suspicion is, most of these capital items should probably more appropriately be on the annual town meeting warrant, but a few of these, if there, you know, really truly is an urgent need for them, then we'll make a justification for that and put it here. So, everything on the listing will either be at the special or the annual, it's all on the same day, it's all in the same booklet, but it's just sort of a technicality. So, I just wanted to highlight that. So, just maybe quickly going down the list, Article One, Budget Corrections, Article, and I'm gonna go quickly, but feel free to jump in, or we can catch questions at the end. Article Two, Transfer to Stabilization. This is higher than what we, higher than what we had at an earlier draft, but part of that is working with the Finance Committee in addition to a new appropriation of the stabilization fund. They wanted to make up for the intent of what was voted at the last annual town meeting that we weren't able to do out of the reserve fund. An appropriation to OPEB, I think I mentioned earlier, you know, the treasurer did confirm with our rating agencies that we're gonna be going out to bond for the school project, it's gonna be huge, and seeing an appropriation to OPEB looks, they look favorably when they give us a rating, so it's good to put something in there, even though we already have a healthy balance. Then we have a whole long list of capital items. We have a lease payment for a fire pumper truck, the purchase of a new mini pumper, and that's, it literally is, there's a tank, there's a pumper on it, but it's a small piece apparatus, it's not a, not a big truck. An admin vehicle, those are the large SUVs that the staff needs, and they're doing regular business as well as responding to incidents. Number seven is an interesting one, so in, we've been going around and around on this with multiple versions of the budget, depending on available funding. One thing I was hoping to be able to fund is an actual reconstruction of that long road at the recycling center, which we in Town Hall, and especially the Health Department, Highway Department, get complaints daily, weekly if not daily on that road. You've all probably been there, it's a minefield. Unfortunately, we're not able to, we don't have sufficient funding to be able to properly do that, but in working with Dave Taylor, we have what we think is a good first step. So, for $50,000, that will allow us to buy some materials with the use of highway labor to improve the drainage, grind it down, and essentially do like the first phase, almost consider like a gravel road, like, prepped. And with the drainage improvements, it's not gonna wash out and get pitted like it was before. And the idea would be FY22 would be we do the actual final paving. So, this will be a dramatic increase in the customer experience driving in there, it just won't be the full-fledged road repave that we wanted to do initially. A Highway Department four-by-four dump truck. The IT Department, this is, he had two, the IT Director had two different requests, and we, we've had different numbers, we started with higher numbers, I cut it way back, now I brought it up a little bit. This is essentially for backup hardware, backup devices, backing up the network, backing up our systems, as well as PC repairs, PC upgrades, I should say upgrades, not repairs. And this is something, again, my understanding from the past is, rather than sort of adding it into the operating budget, in many departments, you guys like to see it broken out as capital, make sure it gets used for the intended purpose.
Can we all get it used for that?
Yep.
Specific purpose.
Exactly. Parks Department, a large commercial mower. Police Department, purchasing two cruisers, again, it's something they do every year. Town Hall capital projects, these are just miscellaneous repairs, and I should highlight, it's not just the Town Hall building, could be the library, could be the McKinley Center, could be the Parks Barn, you know, whatever, there's, this is essentially our facilities' budget. There's no staffing, this is just, you know, we hire out private contractors to make the repairs. I have a long list of things that that money can be used for. School Department, this is everything that the School Department has asked, and we confirmed that again today, so there's, this is everything that the School Department's asked for. There's an annual technology upgrade, and then a whole number of leases for activity bus, purchase of a dump truck, plow, with a plow, various bed leases, and then two train-to-van leases. So, a number of School Department items. Then the following dozen or so list are for water and sewer-related projects, studies, one is actually rescinding a prior article which they no longer need, so that it can be used for these other purposes, treatment plan upgrades, leak detection, a backhoe, meter replacement, server upgrade. So, all these that should be highlighted are funded from their respective revolving fund revenues, they're not coming out of the general fund, from the general fund. Similarly, this is a, this number 28, for example, would be an important one to do at the special, as opposed to the annual, is rescind and reallocate prior appropriate, various prior appropriations at the McKinley Community Center, so that we can use that for continued maintenance of the building. So, the prior projects are closed out, so this way we can use this, there's a lot of, as you know, there's a lot of repairs needed there. Number 29 is a vote to allow the use of unexpended bond proceeds for bonding. So, I was talking to Biz and John Oert about this earlier, and I feel like my best sort of metaphor for it is, if you're buying a house and, you know, you have to come up with cash for your closing, you know, you can borrow a little bit more to finance the cost of your closing. So, essentially, when we get a bond, when we require a premium, we get that premium from whoever, and without that vote at town meeting, you can't use that to cover your financing costs, so that's what this allows us to do for prior issued bonds. Makes a lot of sense, every other town does it. And it looks like the last one is from the Sewer Commissioners appropriating undesignated fund balance to supplement a prior-year article. So, again, all the water sewer come from their revolving funds, they don't touch the general fund. Most of the, like I said before, I feel like most of these will likely move over to the annual. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So, then moving over to the annual town meeting warrant, try to follow like the normal sort of progression, you know, start with the annual elections, moving on to the elected official compensation vote. Then Article Number Three, that's the big one that I always hold my breath for, that's the one that's the most, most important, is the overall budget for the general fund, water and sewer, so that's the, that's the big one. Number Four is, you know, authorizing revolving funds, that's the total of all the different revolving funds, I believe you guys have done that every year. Number Five is something, excuse me, something new. This came about as a, it's a long story sort of how it came about, but the Highway Superintendent supports this. It would be a new bylaw that would impose restrictions on people essentially pumping water out into the road, causing, causing damage to the pavement. So, it would be a general bylaw, and that's the intent of this, and we have, you know, we have draft language for it, and we can certainly get into that more if you'd like, but this is something that there's a little bit of a loophole now, and there's no technical bylaw that if someone's pumping out of their property, out of the road, causing problems, it's not, you know, there's something relating to sidewalks, but not roads. The next one is another general bylaw. This would require fingerprinting for when, I forgot the technical term, when people go door-to-door, door-to-door sales, those kinds of things, there, in many towns in the region are requiring that they get fingerprinted, so people know that, 'cause it's, you know, it's concerning sometimes when a stranger shows up in a door, ringing your doorbell at night, you don't know what's going on, so if they have the badge, went to the police department, they've been fingerprinted, you know, you would know that it's somebody that has been cleared. Again, that's something also being done in other towns. Those are two general bylaws. The next set we've talked about previously, these would be the initial quote-unquote "low-hanging fruit" that the Charter Review Committee is looking at for the first phase of Charter amendments, amendments to the Rockland Town Charter. So, the first one would eliminate the mandatory one-year probationary term for a new town administrator. Obviously, would not affect me, 'cause I'm already working my way through that one-year probationary term, but in the future, for any new town administrator, you wouldn't have to require that. You always have the option to do that, or any board always could choose to do that, but it wouldn't require it, and I would argue it is certainly a disincentive for, for many qualified people looking for this position. The next one relates to modifying the termination provision of a town administrator, we talked about this before, and the strange situation you were at earlier with only three sitting board members, you couldn't do anything. So, this would change that by referencing language, you know, like two-thirds or supermajority or whatever, so if you had three sitting members, you could still take the actions you needed to take, but by having that supermajority language, it also protects the administrator, which is also reasonable. It adds language for the new Assistant Town Administrator position, which didn't exist earlier in the, in town. And then Article 10 changes the title of the Appraiser, and it might even be technically now Assistant Appraiser, or something strange like that, to the Director of Assessing, it's a more standard title. Also changes the title of the Youth Commission to the Recreation Commission, which the recreation folks, the Youth Commission folks, think will be really important, 'cause it more accurately reflects what they do, would also make them eligible for different grants that they're not currently available for, because they don't have the term recreation in their name. The next, next one relates to potentially renewing the Charter Review Committee. I think the language in there talks about like an end date of, you know...
It's 2021.
Right, and so you might, it might be like appropriate to just extend that for another period of time.
Yeah, well, you'd only done it for 20, a 24-month period.
Right. I think Article 13, after meeting with Rich earlier, we can probably take off, because I don't think the School Building Committee was actually voted by town meeting, right? So, we can...
No, it's mandated by MSBA.
So, we'll probably take Article...
In their regulation, so...
So, we'll probably take Article 13 off. The next three were forwarded by our Veterans Agent. Gold Star Parents' Property Tax Exemption, so this would allow parents of a person who, a Gold Star, Gold Star Parents would get a full exemption on their property taxes. The next one is the Baller Act exemption, so there's a dollar amount that the Board of Assessors agreed to where disabled veterans can work to help offset their property tax liability. And then the last one, the Brave Act exemption, is essentially like an expansion of the real estate veteran exemption, so it's, that's the way I understand it from talking to the Assessing Department. Essentially, it expands the exemption that already exists for veterans on their real estate taxes. The next two are, everything, everything in this, in this packet, you know, I've been working on for a while with the help of others, but the next two were literally just brought to my attention, so I wanted to make sure you were aware of this, and I included the language, you should have it in your binders following this. So, the, the town clerk has asked for two potential articles. They'd be done by accepting mass, two specific provisions of mass general law to allow for additional stipends on top of their salary. The first would be up to $1,000 if they're certified by the state, and then the second one deals with if they also serve as on the Board of Registars. So, the first one, I believe, is a maximum of up to $1,000, and the second one, a maximum of up to $4,000. I don't know what the exact cost estimate would be in our situation with our current town clerk. Again, I apologize for coughing so much. As I've been working through the budget process, I know I did have budget meetings with each department head, but I just learned about this, I don't have this included in the budget, I don't have funding for this right now, but, you know, the department had asked for it, so I felt obligated to bring it to your attention, if I should be aware of it. I don't know if you want to talk about that now or later, but I'll obviously need some direction on, on how to handle that. Also, I did include, as I mentioned in prior meetings, for all department heads that either have a contract that's expiring, or that for whatever reason don't have a contract, a two-and-a-half percent wage increase for all those department heads, the electeds as well. So, I did put in for all elected department heads a two-and-a-half percent increase, so this would be potentially up to $5,000.
Above and beyond that two-and-a-half percent.
Above and beyond the two-and-a-half percent that I had already included. So, I think, I think your options, obviously you guys decide what goes on the warrant, so you can decide whether to place this on the warrant or not. If you did want to put it on the warrant, we could always add language about having it be subject to appropriation. Other options would be, you know, to include that, but have that be factored into the two-and-a-half percent, so it'd be a lower percentage raise, but when you add the two together, it would equal two-and-a-half percent. Or you could include it as-is, and they would get this amount on top of the two-and-a-half percent.
This is actually greater than the two-and-a-half percent.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just laying out all the options, you know, you can not do anything, you know, you can do it on top, you can blend it in, so it...
Doug, when, when did you start asking the department heads for their budget information?
Oh, boy. Two months ago?
Yeah, I think it was October.
Couple months ago.
And you got this literally less than a week ago?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think, oh, you know, very generally speaking, you know, we do have a relatively similar salary for elected department heads, you know, that's all ballpark speaking, and I, I mean, I think, generally speaking, that is a pretty, oh, you know, it's a pretty sustainable salary, that as you mentioned, oh, will be growing or is anticipated to increase by two-and-a-half percent, oh, you know, in FY21. One of the things, I mean, especially, oh, I mean, we're at a point right, oh, right now, where, oh, you know, I mean, I think later in our agenda, we're gonna be talking about personnel policies, and then we're going to be talking about, oh, like, oh, actually, department head performance reviews. I think, oh, you know, what you undertake this now, oh, and frankly, for our board to recommend it, like, at a point where we're just really at the, like, at the infancy of seeing those other areas really being implemented, you know, I would like to see, oh, you know, how those, how those two things are implemented, the, oh, the cooperation we have as, oh, as a whole, like, in having both those things implemented, and how, oh, and, oh, and whether that's smooth, whether that's, oh, you know, there are any challenges, and frankly, you know, I would like to see before we go forward, oh, you know, a really, oh, really, like a salary, a comparison of how, oh, you know, the present salary that our town clerk now makes, oh, you know, in comparison to other, oh, you know, surrounding town clerks.
So, we recently did that. Stacy Callahan, our HR Director, she, she ran all those comps for, for us earlier this week, and we looked at it, and I will say, our town clerk position is slightly above the median salary on, on the scale. Stacy provided us with a bottom salary, a top salary, and then the median, our position, our town clerk position anyway, is, I think, about $3,000 to $4,000 above the median, so it's on the high side, as it is, as it compares to other communities that might be a little bit more wealthier than Town Rockland as well, so...
Mike, and that comparison is that, so shore communities, eastern Mass communities, all of Massachusetts, do we know?
And I will say, our town clerk position is slightly above the median salary on, on the scale. Stacy provided us with a bottom salary, a top salary, and then the median, our position, our town clerk position anyway, is, I think, about $3,000 to $4,000 above the median. So it's on the high side, as it is, as it compares to other communities that might be a little bit more wealthier than Towne Rockland as well, so.
My comparison is that, so Shore Communities, Eastern Mass Communities, all of Massachusetts? Do we know?
You know, I, I think she, she pretty much stuck to Eastern Mass. She, she did whittle it down, I think, a little bit further on, on some of those, to the South Shore specifically. And from a South Shore standpoint, it, that position is slightly higher than what, like I said, the median salary. So you might have a clerk in Duxbury that's making $100,000, you might have a clerk in, I won't say another town, but making $50,000, and, you know, it gives you $75, so. So, yeah, so we're, we're slightly above. So to Doug's point, I, I don't know if, if we were looking to adopt these, these articles, there might have to be something done with the compensation specifically within the budget itself.
I'd have to find a way to, I'd have to find a way to fund it.
Yeah.
I guess, is the first thing.
Yeah.
So I guess I'd have to find a way to fund it, and I'd, and I'd also want to know if he would still want to keep the base 2.5% increase in addition to that or not. But if he didn't, then I would offset one with the other.
I just think this, this, for the most part, I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm not against it, but I don't feel as though this is necessarily the year to necessarily be going out this way. We've got a lot of dead money out there that is paying for not having Town Hall properly staffed last year, and having the budget process that we went through last year. So I, I don't know, adding, adding additional expenditures to the budget that's already, you know, that, as you can attest to, is pretty tight to begin with, and you guys have been moving numbers back and forth for the last, you know, five months, anyway. So to come in this late in the game, I don't know, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong.
I would, I would just recommend that we table it, put the discussion on it tonight, and allow Doug Lapp to work out the details of whether, you know, it can be worked into her salary, the way we just, you know what I mean, balance it out.
I guess I'd want the direction, so I know exactly what you're, what you'd like me to do.
I would just, I would just say, let's, let's allow you guys to talk about it, and then at the next meeting, two weeks from now, we'll, we'll have a better understanding of where we're staying, and how much money we got, and whatever, and I'll be can work it out with her. Otherwise, we should put it off till, just till next year.
Yeah, I mean, to, oh, you know, to the flip side of that point, though, you know, we have like a salary structure, like, and we already know that what's being requested will not fit.
Right.
Oh, in the salary structure.
Right.
Like, and because of that, we have like a game plan, generally, of how we're moving forward, oh, with elected department heads in the next fiscal year, like, and where we're at, especially with the department head evaluations, especially with the personnel policies, that, oh, really, we hold a year, I can see where we're at aft, in a year from now. So I would make that a motion, that we vote to not recommend, oh, based on those three things.
Okay, so that's a motion, but I'm going to, Rich, talk real quick.
So, so to that point, the, the other part is, coming so late in the game, where it started in October, we are far down the road of, of working out this budget. To come this late in the game, I think, can, you know, disrupt a lot of things. So may not sound like a lot to come up with $5,000.
It is.
But it really is, particularly this late in the game. So I would actually second Mike Mullins' motion to not put this on.
Okay, before I put the motions out there, Carol, anything? Any thoughts on it?
No, I'm not entirely against it either at this point, but I think we should probably wait a year or so.
All right, I just said, you good? I'm good, okay. So I have a motion and a second. Mike, can you just repeat what the motion was?
I make the motion to not recommend, I do not recommend Articles 17 and 18 based on the, the proposed, or the anticipated salary structure we have for elected appointed, no, I'm sorry, elected department heads in FY '21, like, and based on the fact that we're moving forward with a department head evaluation process, like, and a new set of personnel policies as well.
You seconded that?
I will second that, okay.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Genanous, thank you, guys. All right.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Doug Warnton, number 19.
Yep.
Derek, you guys are up. Community Preservation, you guys have a copy of the sheet?
We have our...
Let me give you mine, so we're seeing, so they're looking at the same order.
Very good.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Unbelievable.
Right, Derek Yule.
Steve O'Donnell.
Community Preservation Committee. Looking at 19 on, number 19, 470, that one's just a, it's basically a procedural thing, that's what we see, our, next year's, you know, return for our, for our taxes or the The next item on that, $169,051, replacing the library's windows, restoration of the trim, repainting such. It was something that actually was brought to us, it was brought up from the town, I believe, and, you know, all of these things that have made it this far went through our committee already. We ended up, we had a banner here, as far as applicants, there's, I think, about 14 applications that came across. Some things put off towards next year, but these ones have already been, you know, taken through, voted on by us, discussed at pretty good length. These also reflect the 10% increase in what the actual estimates were, or the requests were for, just to cover any overages. You know, we're, exactly, we're taking these things back in October with, with the initial applications, you know, estimates change, commodities change, you know, go up and down, steel prices, anything. So we add that 10% in. But as far as it goes, 16951, the window replacement, the comprehensive usage plan for Harts of Park, another 638 for that one. That'll actually be a very good one to include, if I can jump ahead a little bit, and this is something that I know Steve is pretty excited about, if he wants to talk about this one here on 26, the...
Sure, this is, this is something that, you know, I had an idea when I joined the CPA Committee, it's something that I wanted to pursue over the next couple of years. Little did I know that the wheels are already in motion, and this is to acquire abutting land to Harts of Park. Expanding Harts of Park from over 16 acres is what we have today, this would add 7.3 acres. You know, and my hope, as we move forward, is that there's some other undeveloped land in that area, we can continue to, to expand Harts of Park, really make it a crown jewel. And so if we go back to number 21, which is the usage plan put forward by the youth commission, that is to look at, you know, the current use, but then also if the acquisition of the, the new land passes, they could also take that into that use plan, and a couple of the ideas of how we could adequately use that land, knowing that it does have CPA restrictions based on the state law, you know, how we could best use that land to, to support the community.
Absolutely, and there was a lot of great help from, from Doug on that one.
Absolutely. That was a long time coming.
Reminder what you guys were signing tonight before you came in, was the conditional purchase and sale agreement, so condition on their approval, condition on town meeting, then we're good to go.
That was, that was a nice, nice group effort. And, and huge thanks to Doug for, for all the help, and Elizabeth as well. It's been getting this stuff together, it's been a little bit of a, it's our first time dealing with more than, you know, two projects. Last year was pretty easy, we kind of got, got by with it.
It's great.
You know, and this year, we just, you know, they dropped a, a bag of requests on us, it was pretty big. Next one here, number 22, the Remembrance Park. We've all seen the, the beautiful job done with the northern side of Town Hall there, the hardscapes, benches, seating areas, this would actually be the southern side. Some of the artifacts from around town, the, the old horse trough and things like that would be incorporated in this Remembrance Park, as well as the Daughters of the American Revolution's plaque and so forth that was, that was brought up. This was something that was actually kind of kicked off about five or six years ago with the Open Space Committee, wanted to do something with it, and, you know, bring historic into it and so forth, so getting that application this year brought, brought up was, was pretty cool, because it had kind of made the rounds for a little while with no, no way of funding, and it fit, it fit the plan pretty well. Next item, 23, McKinley School Sprinklers. That was a...
Appreciate you having us.
Yeah, that was a pretty, that was a pretty good one.
Going to keep the building open because of that?
You know what, it's, it's part of the grand plan of it, though. I mean, that, that is a historic building in town, obviously, National Register of Historic Places. Our, lack of a better term, our CPA guru, Stuart Saginaw from the Coalition, that was one of the first buildings he saw in town, and he just absolutely loved it, and he says, "This building needs CPA." You know, so after, after some discussion, and some back and forth, you know, with the, with the committee itself, everybody pretty much came to terms, this would be the first step in that restoration. We were assured that what we pay for now isn't going to have to be scrapped later on when we do come to, to make the actual restoration of the building, it would be able to be updated, and most of the stuff would be included into it, so it wouldn't just be all for naught, you know, if, if going forward.
We definitely appreciate you guys' support on, on that project.
Absolutely.
That was, to your point, it's kind of, a light bulb went off, like CPA, right? I mean, it's, it's a historical register, historical building. Anybody that we have that comes through town, from a developer perspective, they look at that building, and they look at the library, and they say, "These two buildings, this, this is what you should focus your downtown around." And, you know, to just let it go to waste, we really appreciate you guys coming up with that for us.
I mean, CPA, it's, it's not just, I mean, we like to think, and, and we do talk about it as being its kind of own little, you know, its little entity over here, autonomous, but at the same time, it is a revenue stream for the town, for projects, the underfunded, the non-funded, the unbudgeted. You know, that's what we ran it on, talking with Rich back when we ran this campaign for to get it started, was the unfunded, the forgotten, you know, the non-budgeted things in town. So it, it really just works hand in hand. Next, electrical updates, and actually, you know, 24 and 25 are both along the same lines. The G.A.R. Hall, everybody's been over there, I hope, it's a pretty fantastic spot. It is owned by a nonprofit, so it's not technically town property, but CPA allows for restoration on a historical premise for, for buildings that are, are seen to be of significance to the, to the history of the town.
To note, both of those buildings are behind this lec...
Yes.
It doesn't actually have to be, like, on a national historic register. It has to have historical significance, right?
Historical significance to the community is really, I mean, it was, you know, there's a couple buildings in town that I look at, I see them when I, you know, when I drive through the center. There's a few buildings in town that are significant to me, and they're significant to a lot of people I grew up with, for specific reasons. They're never going to be on the register, they're not, they're never going to get, you know, the recognition. But at the same time, they're, they're buildings that if they were gone, and they were kind of removed from, from the downtown, you'd notice it, it would make an impact, and, and not so much a good one, a negative impact. You'd, you'd be missing that building, saying, "Oh, you know, remember when that used to be there?" So, yeah.
The bandstand, could you say the bandstand?
The bandstand, kid, you know what, it's too late, it came too late. It, it, the bandstand, I spent a lot of time skateboarding at the bandstand when I, when I grew up. It was fantastic spot, but we watched concerts there even as a child. You know, when I was a kid, going down there and sitting there, the high school band would play there. It was a pretty cool thing, but obviously not very historic. So both of those, the restoration of the ceiling, the replastering and so forth in a period-correct manner, right through to the actual where the stairwell is to go upstairs, you know, basically refinishing that area. And then the, the next item on that same one was the 25, which is the, oop, 20, I missed those up, 24 was the second floor, that's the electric lighting and so forth as well. You got two different articles here, and actually, I think they might be thrown out of whack here, just let me double-check my notes. Yep, main floor, yep, these are actually backwards.
So the main floor is at 299?
Yep, the main floor is 299, and the 6380 is the electrical for the second floor, period-correct lighting and so forth. The, the lodger of the two was for the, the plaster updates, you know, and basically all that, that stuff has to be done in a historic, you know, nature, period-correct, to meet with not only CPA guidelines, but also for a building of, of historical significance, you know, to, if they were looking for outside grants or anything like that, it would have to be, you know, along the same guidelines. We had asked that some wording was included in this article. Doug, I believe, was going to look into it.
So my, my recommendation, I'll, I'll work with John Clifford on this, to include in the articles, for, and based on my experience in Sandwich, because they were one of the first towns on the Cape to do the CPA, if you give money to any outside entity, I'd recommend doing a grant agreement, so there's specific strings attached, so they don't just take the money and do something else with it. You know, it should be, and so there shouldn't be any issue, but I'll, and we should have that in the warrant article as well, that, you know, the money is contingent on...
For that specific person.
Exactly, so, exactly. So we'll work out the details with John, but, so refer to a grant agreement in the article.
All right, and Steve and I already talked about number 26, the, the land purchase. The ADA-compliant park in the vicinity of Union Square, everybody's been outside dunks, that little patch of land that runs along the side, even actually, if you, if you look at the Rocklands property maps, the parking spaces and so forth are technically Rockland property, why they don't belong to them. But the area around that, to be constructed another, another park.
Bushes that have all the nips in them.
Yep. And basically, I mean, I think it's a great idea personally, you know, as a board, we discussed it, it's, it's a problem area, it's a hangout area, it's an area where people can actually stay out of the direct line of sight, yet, you know, still be around the center. So Dave had brought us a, a pretty good proposal to, to clean that up.
More of a hodgepie?
More hodgegate than anything, you know, tables, benches, sitting areas, plus being right in kind of the midway point, you know, you stop in a dunk, so you hit, you know, the station lake, or whatever your preference is, and you have a place to hang out, but you're in view. You know, it's, it's a lot better to be able to see what's going on than wonder what's going on, especially where it is now. That's a, through the rail trail cleanups and everything that we've done in that area over the past 10 years.
That's the, that's the problem?
That's the worst problem. The worst problem area, there's two of them, that's probably the worst, because it is, like you had said, this, you know, bushes with nips growing on them, and, you know, it's strewn about, so I think it's a fantastic idea, and, you know, it's bang for your buck.
Two years ago, when I was, I was in that on the rail trail cleanup, we had more than 400 nips.
Yep.
That we picked up just in that spot.
Yep, absolutely, and obviously, we know where they're coming from. You know, and we've, we've gotten some help, I mean, trying to, to go to the, the owners with them and so forth, and he's, he basically said, he's like, you know, he put a trashcan outside, he put another one on the front side, and people don't use them. You know, he, he's to his level where he can't really extend himself out too much, he can't police the customers once they're off your property, but he's made some efforts to, to try to curb it himself, you know. Last one, rail trail signalization, number 28. This was something that was brought up, once again, Dave Taylor and Charlie Williams, they brought up, it's actually, I, I firsthand, and, you know, on the receiving end of, of a near miss. It's basically to put in some crosswalk signalizations along the rail trail on the major-grade crossings when you get Liberty Street, Howard Street, Plain Street. You know, right now, people, you know, they, they're good, they, they try to slow down, they stop, this and that, but it's, it's, we're really pretty close a few times to a couple of real good near misses. Other, other places, you go down the Cape Cod Rail Trail, they've got them. You know, they, they basically stop traffic in all directions, allow people to cross. We'll be doing something through Union Square as well. Most of these things, especially with that one, the, the prices are based on quotes for installation, so, you know, supplying, you know, all the units and so forth, but there are other ways that we can go about it if it's a possibility. We did it as soup to nuts, it's done, but using the standards and the, and the rates, you know, we might be able to use town labor for some of the stuff, do some of the installations ourselves, and so forth, which would actually...
Are they going to be solid, or are they going to be...
They would be, and, and from my understanding, is they would be a solar unit, much like the, the flashing speed signs and, and some of the other stop signs that they've, we've gotten installed. And there were two different types, there was one that was passive, and one that was active, one that you push a button, one that registers when you walk up to it. So there's a, I was doing some reading about it just to, to figure it out, there's some pretty cool stuff out there. Based on their plan, you know, they've, they've basically went to one of the major companies that deals with this stuff, and, and got what their pricing would be. So we feel comfortable with everything that we've, that we've put out there. You know, Doug had actually said, for, for relatively not a lot of money on this grand scale of thing, I mean, $900,000 is a lot of money, but on the grand scale of thing, it's not a lot of money for, for the amount of, amount of stuff that we're looking at this year.
And Derek, you've been able to fund all these projects without bonding anything, right? You've been able to do it out of our, our tax levy, out of the, out of the fund?
Yep, it was, it was questioned whether or not this year we were going to make it with, with what we had on the board, and whether or not bonding was going to be an option. We discussed it with, with Doug, and with Elizabeth, and even with John, John Ellard as well, what, what the options were for it. You know, at the end of the day, you know, we, we would definitely sway it one way, which would just... would just be to outright pay for things, not bond anything. You know, that might be an option in the future, but not this year. So this will all be out of the, the reserve funds and the individual funds for open space public housing, not been spent yet, but, you know, those are all in reserves.
Excellent. That's awesome. Nice job.
I appreciate it.
I do want to note, all of these articles that we submitted were all voted unanimous to approve by the board of the committee. And so with that, I think we ask, you know, if we could have the selectmen to, you know, put their name and recommend some of these projects or all of them, it would be great on the warrant.
I'll make a motion, or I'll entertain a motion that we recommend them all.
I'll make a motion that we recommend them.
Second.
But can I just say one thing real quick? I just want to, I'll just quickly recognize the synergy that really, oh, you know, has been created, oh, it can exist between the CPC, like in the town administrator, you mentioned that the fire department personnel, the highway department, oh, you know, really the synergy is, like in my view, this whole effort, I mean, really what you're doing, like in the CPC is doing is exactly like, oh, we had hoped, and I think everyone went to, either went to the ballot box two years ago, it's what we all envisioned, and I just think it's like a textbook example of just how we as a Rockland government are working out, so I want to thank you for that.
No, thank you. Thank you very much.
Excellent job. Say hello to your brother for me, there.
We have a motion and a second to recommend the CPC articles. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Recommend it.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, thanks for your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Doug.
I did have to do a double take when you walked in. I did a double take when you walked in.
I did hear him say Derek was here, I didn't.
Yeah, you look like, just different, that's all.
Yeah, I just want to jump on the bandwagon and echo what you guys said, it's a great committee to work with, and I, what Derek was referencing was that at the last meeting we were talking and went through the list, we're getting a huge bang for our buck, and it's touching like all different aspects, you know, land acquisition, which is going to benefit this town forever, and some historic preservation, that type of thing, just as you were saying, Rich, they wouldn't happen otherwise, we just wouldn't have the funding available, the private organizations wouldn't, so I fully endorse everything Derek and the, and the group said, that's great.
Open space park and historical address in all of these articles, so it's phenomenal, that's, that's the goal.
And we're paying cash, you know, we're not, we're not borrowing yet. When some larger, when some really bigger projects come that we need to bond, then we'll have the ability to do that, we need it, but we don't need it yet. The last two articles, I just wanted to highlight, one is the flood plain bylaw. I think technically this might be an update, I think there is something that the board of health previously adopted, there's a new map out, Jen is really the one doing all the work on this, but I believe in order to participate with the National Flood Insurance Program, we've got to make sure we have the most current, up to date maps approved by the town, so we're, we're sorting this out with, with council to make sure we're getting the right thing done. Then the last thing is a petition article, which we just received, which my understanding is, is relatively rare in, in Rockland. I did include the form in your packet, and I'll just read the, the sentence that was included in the, in the box, it says, "Will the citizens of the town of Rockland vote to amend the general bylaws by adopting a bylaw entitled reduction of single-use plastic bags designed to stop the distribution of single-use plastic bags by businesses?" And then there is attached some draft language that would apply to this new bylaw, and it has a, a schedule for fines, first offense would be a written warning, then escalating from 50 to 100 to $200. It looks like, I think, the board of health and the state attorney general's office would be involved, and I, I think the intent is for, to ban the sort of disposable one-time use of things that you see often at convenience stores or grocery stores or, or things like that. It did have the proper number of, of signatures that were certified by the town clerk, so in my opinion, it, it should go on the warrant. Just as a side note, because I know you guys tend not to get as many of them, some towns like Sandwich, just as a matter of course, they would never, the selectmen would never take a position on petitions, they just would stay neutral, just put on the warrant, let the town meeting vote. Other towns, selectmen, if they don't agree with something, they will say, we don't recommend this. So I, it's up to you guys, I just wanted to let you know, different towns handle petitions differently.
Well, you and I spoke briefly yesterday, and I said, you know, if, if a resident wants to put a petition out there, then, you know, it's, it's, they're right, and I think I'd be willing to, not speak for the rest of the board, but I, I think it's got a place on, on the warrant, and let the town people make their decision if they want to support it or not, so.
Yeah, it's up to the citizen to, to present it and, and talk about it.
So what I hear you saying is you most likely won't have a recommendation one way or the other, just be silent to it and put it on, it's fine.
Can I just have one quick question on that note? I know there can years pass when we have, we have had a few eliminated petitions that have been sponsored or initiated over the, our last few years or so, and one of the things that has oft, that has often, that has often come up in town meetings and notwithstanding, oh, you know, oh, oh, really the merit or the popularity of, like a petition, was that there was a question of whether or not the petition was in the right form anyways, and then, oh, you know, oh, like whether or not the petition was in the right form, oh, it then became, oh, like a strategy for some people, had to be able to question it like a town, oh, like a town meeting to just, oh, you know, basically say this, oh, oh, very simply, like it's not in the right form, it doesn't apply, so is there any way, as we move forward, we can just, without taking a position, just make sure that really what is being proposed would fit?
Yeah, so another way maybe to frame your question is, if this passes, is it binding? You know, would it be incorporated into our bylaws and, you know, would it actually count?
Yes, can it be incorporated, exactly.
Or is it something that would be moot?
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so he made a quick conversation about it the other day, and it was, it was just, what was sent to Doug was just, you know, will the town vote to eliminate the use of single-use plastic bags without any real, you know, substance behind it?
Understood.
So, you know, when I talked to Doug, you know, I said, well, let's, let's reach out and complete this so that it's, you know, all the, the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, so that it's not going to town meeting and it's blown up off the floor without the petition having an actual legitimate shot as it's going through.
Exactly.
So anything that I think goes on our warrant, I think it's up to, you know, Doug, obviously, you know, you guys and your staff would be the ones handling it, but I think it's up to, you know, you guys to make sure that it's done properly and it's, it's, it's complete, you know, I don't want anything incomplete going on the warrant.
Can I take a?
Without you doing it necessarily.
Can I take a counter? Is it, is it the town's responsibility to make sure that a, that a citizen's petition is, is written correctly?
I don't think it's our responsibility to make sure it's written correctly, but I think, you know, if Doug were to say, hey, listen, I noticed that you're missing the entire body of your petition, you have until, what do we say, March 13th to resubmit before the warrant closes. That kind of communication back.
That's fine.
Not doing the legwork and doing the work.
Right, so that's my, you can really go down a slippery slope.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Because that's my, is that all of a sudden, if we're going to take that responsibility on, now all of a sudden, are we going to have tons of citizens just?
Yeah, creating a new department, a petition department.
Here's a line and you take care of it.
No, but, but I just, you know, before anything goes on the warrant, you know, if you do it once over and you say, you have to March 13th to make sure this is 100% right.
Agreed.
Yes.
Oh, and I think two or three years ago, like the example I came back to, and I forget the specific example, was there was a petition file that actually had some merit, and I forget what the issue was.
It was the language that blew it up.
It was the language that was not correct.
Oh, and the petitioner really made a good faith effort, and, oh, oh, and I'm not saying that residents' petition is, oh, really shouldn't do their due diligence, because if that's what they're going to propose, they should, but, like, it was a technical thing?
But there's an untrained eye and a trained eye.
Exactly, and if we could just.
If you could catch something and make sure before it goes on the warrant.
That's all I'm saying, and I don't want to go down that slippery slope.
I don't think we, so I guess my, my concern here is, where's that cutoff line?
I agree.
So, as I'm hearing this, and I'm almost hearing some different things, at least what I hear here, if there's something egregious and Doug sees it, that's fine.
Yes, yeah.
I don't think we ever go down the road of having town council.
Oh, no, no, I agree with you.
So at the end of the day, so, so that one that was, that was off by, by language, that, that wouldn't, that probably wouldn't get caught by, you, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I forget exactly what the issue was, but I.
It was, it was, it was how it was worded.
But I also think, you know, we, we see a final copy of the warrant, right, that comes to us before we approve that final copy. If any one of us is sitting here and we see something, we say, hey, that's a little bit off, Doug, why don't you reach out to whoever the resident is, tell them they got till tomorrow to fix that before we go.
For them to fix it, that's, that's.
But the one thing I want to caution you on though is, you know, they got signatures based on something that was written, so that they can't kind of change it.
No, yeah.
And I think the other point too is, I want to make sure that we treat everybody, excuse me, everybody the same, and, because it can be hard if somebody's proposing something that I think is just a terrible idea, bad for the town.
Right.
Right, so I think, what I think I'm hearing is kind of simple, kind of procedural process thing, I'll treat everybody the same tale and that, but as they submit it, you know, if it's completed, it's on time, that's what it is. Because I think otherwise, we could be looked at as we're giving favors to them.
And at the end of the day, if it goes there and, and even if it passes, if, if town council then looks at it and says, you know, this, this does not, it doesn't meet, then it doesn't meet.
I think, I think the word Doug uses was process, and that's what I was trying to find up there, and I couldn't quite put my finger on it, but I think the process, you know, advising them with the process going forward, and that's it. I think that's the extent of the board that we give a petition.
Yeah, and to that end, I mean, a few years ago, I think the issue, oh, I think to everyone's point, oh, really lied in the fact that the petitioner had no idea what the expectation of the process was, and that was the heart of the issue.
That's fine, and I, anybody from the public that's listening, if, you know, if they're interested in ever doing a petition, I encourage them to call town hall first so we can explain the process.
Explain the process, that's.
So.
That's my, yeah.
Good. So again, this is where we're at with the warrant. I'm going to take off number, on the annual number 13, which is renewing the school building committee, I'll take off 17 and 18 regarding the town clerk, mass general law acceptance stipends, and I'm going to obviously correct the numbers on the two CPC articles. Is there, and like I said earlier, I'll probably move a number of these capital, capital items from the special to the annual. Is there anything that you guys think I'm missing, or anything on, anything else on here you don't want to do or you'd want to change?
So the only thing I don't see on this yet, and I don't know if they've done it, is anything from, from zoning or planning.
I don't believe there's any proposed zoning, I have checked, I have asked them.
Really?
Yeah, I had the same happy smile when I, when I saw that.
Ooh, wow.
Yeah, I think they're going to just take a little break and, I did, I did check that, yeah, I did.
That was a good half an hour during it, you just kind of.
Don't have, don't have, no funny point.
Right, I know often in many towns, that's when the auditorium exits, you know, right, so no, I believe there are none, I have checked.
We may have a record town meeting, like 45 minutes.
That'll be good.
Okay.
All right, so if, if any of you individually happen to think of something, obviously, just shoot me an email, give me a call, let me know. All right, great.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. Moving on, next on the agenda, adopt draft personnel policy. Human Resources Director Stacy Callahan, obviously Stacy couldn't be here tonight, she's sending to her mother. Doug?
Great, thank you, and we're fortunate that we actually have Labor Council Jamie Kenny is also here for something else later on the agenda, so she's coming up right now, and I think she'll bail me out if I start screwing things up, and if you guys have any, have any questions, obviously feel free to chime in. As you guys know, we've been working with Labor Council for a while now to help update our existing policies, we had a personnel handbook, we had an old personnel bylaw. See you guys, thank you. We want to better align them with changes in state law and, and just current best practices. Once this gets adopted, it'll go into effect for all non-union workers, we'll also send a draft to the unions for impact bargaining, and once we receive feedback from the unions, if there are any changes, and then a final version would need to be re-adopted. So I think the context again for this in the past, you know, just to repeat it, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of individual employment contracts in the town, it's the way things have been for a long time, and working with Labor Council, we really concluded that, you know, while some of them, you know, might be allowed, may be allowed under state law, they're certainly not required, and in fact, as we look at all the other communities and just modern best practices, it's just not a best practice, so you've already decided to start moving away from that, you know, which we are. And in, you know, when I was talking to Jamie earlier, some of the words we came up with about why we're working on these personnel policies are to look at best practices, transparency, uniformity, and centralization of the role of HR, and I think those are all important things to, to work toward. A few, a few individuals will likely need to have employment contracts, we've talked about some of them before. If Stacy were here, what I think she was going to do is just kind of run through some of the highlights. You've already seen this document, I'm not going to try to pretend like I'm as well versed in this as Stacy, but maybe what I'll just highlight is, you know, it's a 49-page document, and it, you know, with Jamie's help, she made sure that we're covering, you know, all the bases with changes in state laws, so it includes newer things like social media policies and, and changes with, you know, required leave, acts, acts that ensure leave for employees, just aligning things with, standardizing things, you know, one of the down, one of the negative aspects of having so many individual employment contracts is different people doing very similar level functions as, you know, department heads and negotiated different things over time for no, I don't want to say for no good reason, but things that should be standardized have been allowed to differ, and so this would, this would bring things all under the same, all under the same standard, includes things like a vacation schedule and, you know, how sick leave is handled, things like that. I feel very comfortable with it, again, I keep saying Jamie because she did a lot of work to help make sure this was, this was done right and in conformance with everything, and I'd encourage you, unless you have any questions you want to ask or any issues you want to raise about it, feel free, now is a perfect time with Jamie here. Once we get to the point when you're comfortable, I'd recommend you vote to adopt it, subject to impact bargaining for all unionized personnel. Now, Jamie, did I miss anything?
No, I think it's perfect, I think we've, we've talked about this before, it's really about, number one, standardization, number two, best practices, and number three, making sure that we're in alignment with what all the applicable state laws are, and HR best practices. There's a lot of stuff that we had to delete and change because there's been updates to the law now, and then also, we had some stuff in there that was really not current or relevant as we sit here today in 2020, so we really went through it with a fine tooth comb and tried to make sure that we were applying best practices. Now, what this also is, is this is notice to the employees about expectations regarding different benefits and also different expectations with respect to behavior, as, as Doug said. So, you know, that's a really important part of due process, which is, is very, very central to the role of HR, to make sure that the employees are on notice of what those expectations are and are on notice of what those benefits are, and so that they have a working guidebook, so to speak, in order to navigate their rights as employees in the town of Rockland. And I think something that has been disheartening before is that there has been this, you know, perceived disparity, because you've had these different employment contracts, and this is really a move to centralize and really apply uniformity to, to the HR role and to how we treat our employees as a town. So I want to thank Doug and Stacy and Jen, and my office Caitlin worked really hard to make sure that we, you know, we went through everything, we went through it again, went through it again, to make sure that, you know, it was number one, written in a way that was accessible to employees, and also written in a way that was in alignment with the current laws. So that's really what we set out to do, and I think we did a good job of that, and I want to thank Doug, also the board, because we've kind of met on some of these issues as well to get feedback, and also Stacy and Jen, the whole team has been great on this.
Guys, any comments, questions?
This is excellent.
Thank you.
This is well put together, complete. There's nothing, nothing missing. I can see, I looked at that table, even just the table of contents, it's impressive. So thank you so much for a great job.
Thank you very much, Larry. I appreciate that.
And Doug, for your participation, Jen, great job. Excellent. These are the type of things that we really need to be able to look at so that there's no question from anybody as to where we're going.
Right. Thank you, Larry.
No, I agree. I actually did read through this, all forty-nine pages. And I've actually been involved in putting some of these together. And I do have to say, this is extremely well done, comprehensive, and I think well overdue in the town. And I think it's another important step forward in, in advancing the town and putting accountability out there. So I'm real happy with this.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Exactly what they all said. But thank you, Jamie, thank you, Stacy, and Doug and Jen. Oh, you know, this is really like, as we just mentioned, a, like, a huge step forward. And I like everyone's on the same exact level playing field now, and the importance of that really can't be understated, so.
I just want to, I just want to take a second and thank everybody that participated in this. But I also want to thank my fellow colleagues up here, because we identified this as, as a need. A couple of years ago, we identified this as a need. And to be at a position now, tonight, where this is coming to fruition, and this will be the policies throughout the town, is very exciting. And, and I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this document. Stacy did, you know, a great job. And I know when we first put this on her plate, she, you know, indicated that she'd be pretty busy with it. And it shows that she's put a lot of hard work into it. But, but that said, everybody that participated in this process and to the four other members up here, to Rich, to your point, it's kind of, you know, checking, checking a box of one more thing that, that we've talked about for, for some time. And we took, you know, change in the town as an opportunity to improve the town and moving forward to continue. So with that said, I'll entertain a motion to adopt them.
I'll make a motion.
Hold on, but there is a specific motion that Carrer is going to make.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right.
I'll make a motion to adopt the personnel policies subject to impact bargaining for unionized employees.
So I have a motion on the floor? I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All of us in favor? Awesome.
Great job.
Great job, guys. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Department Head Performance Evaluations Update. Doug?
So right after the end of the personnel policies, you should see two documents in your binder. The first is a goal planning document, and then the second one after that is a template for a performance evaluation. So I should probably back up and just say that, you know, I've been, we've been doing a lot these last seven months, and I'm, I'm sure some department heads and staff probably feel like it's a lot in a short amount of time. And I can appreciate that. And I, I certainly don't ever want staff to think that the way they've been doing everything in the past is all wrong, and now we're fixing everything, because that's not the way we're trying to approach it. But I do feel strongly, and we've talked about this for a while, that, you know, goal-setting and performance evaluations are important in any professional organization. And unfortunately, Rockland's not alone in this. In some towns, it kind of gets, it sort of falls by the wayside. And so this has not been something that's been formally done here in the past, so this is a big change. So I wanted to share with you the documents that we're working with. And this is something that I've been talking with staff here about since the first month I started back in July. So we've been literally talking about this every single month for the last seven months. So Stacy led a team of fellow department heads that volunteered to work with her collaboratively to help develop these two documents. And the idea again being is start with goal, goal-setting, get those done first, and then use that as a tool with performance evaluation. So the, the goal planning document you see, it's got the SMART, the SMART acronym, specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and time-bound. Asked to, you know, describe each goal and objective, how it can be evaluated, and rate the relative importance. And it includes four, includes four with boxes to check, whether it's essential, important, or desirable. And so this is something that the, the staff came up with. I like it because it's short and it's, you know, it's, and it's effective. So that's what we've been using. So I distributed that to all department heads. And then similarly, the performance evaluation review tool, this is something that I think we started with, with something that Jamie Kenny provided us. And then Stacy took that and ran with it, again, with the help of other department heads, because I wanted to make sure that department heads had a role in what these documents would look like, so it wasn't just imposed from above. So it's, it's pretty standard, you know? It's got like a one to five scale. And it's got a whole bunch of categories, things that are pretty standard with most, most organizations, job knowledge, problem-solving, planning and organization, customer service, teamwork and interpersonal skills, professionalism, dependability, quality and quantity of work, work habits, and personal and professional development. And then there's a space for employee comments at the back. Also, it includes a space for any areas that might require additional training or improvement or a timeline for completing necessary corrective action. So I know some of these might seem a little bit duplicative, but really trying to just distinguish between the major categories. You know, I think some companies, it might be a simple one-page form, others it might be like a ten-page form, and there's all three sixty reviews. There's all different ways. I wanted to start by keeping it simple, just keeping it to a couple pages. So this is also something that's been, you know, distributed to all department heads, with the exception of, you know, one or two performance evaluations that per their contracts were required to be done sooner. The rest of these, I anticipate doing closer to the end of the fiscal year, you know, at the end of June. So this is, this is the process I've been, I've been laying out. Do you have any questions?
So I think this is another, another thing that we had discussed with the board. You know, there's no doubt in my mind that performance reviews existed within the town of Rockland a few years. It's, now the next part is the follow-through and ensuring that they're being done on a regular basis for all departments. So this is, this is another thing that's, for me, is pretty exciting that, that we're implementing this and that, that all, all the departments are on board, hundred percent. So I'll take it.
Well, I think with, with the new organization and having Stacy in that role of, of Director of Human Resources, we now actually have the personnel in place to make sure that these things are being done. Is that, is that going to be the timeline, end of fiscal year?
That, that's what I think we make, because I didn't want to do them right away because I just got here. So, you know, by the end of the fiscal year, I'll be, I'll be approaching one year, and so I thought that would align things properly.
And will they, is that the same timeframe as when they're setting their goals for the, for the, for the following year?
Right.
Okay.
Right. So I wasn't able to, because I haven't done these yet, you know, I've been doing, as I mentioned earlier, with a budget across the board, two and a half percent increases for those who don't have a contract in place for the following year. But my, my plan, my big plan would be, as we adopt these personnel policies, you know, and as most of the contracts, you know, would, would go away, for those that aren't under contract, the plan would be there's, you know, some sort of baseline annual salary increase that would be called a COLA, call it a cost of living adjustment, whatever. And then another factor associated with, based on performance, so that if you have, you know, two depart, two different staff, one is excelling, doing exceptionally well, working hard, and the other one is not, has problems, deficiencies, whatever, they shouldn't get the same salary increase. I don't think that's appropriate. I don't think that's how most organizations do it. So this would give the information and the tool to be able to make those decisions. I just, since I'm just starting, I'm just laying out the process, and I anticipate being able to do that next year.
So I have a question on the elected departments, because I know they're, they're a little bit different. Have they chosen to participate in this, or have they not?
Right. So it's, you know, this is the awkward part about municipal government and having, you know, meetings on television. We, we do have four elected department heads, and currently, two of them are participating in this process and two have elected not to.
So it's not a hundred percent?
I'm sorry, say that again.
So it's not a hundred percent?
It's not a hundred percent, no.
Okay.
And as we know, and I can't, I can't direct an elected department head to participate in this if they choose not to.
I, I mean, obviously, you know, I agree, and I don't want to, you know, overstep any bounds as a member of this board, but, you know, we provide goals and objectives for this board on a yearly basis, and we provide that to the taxpayers. And there's nothing that says that, that we have to, but we do, because I think it's important that the general public know what, what the goals of their elected officials are. And just, I guess it's unfortunate that they have chosen not to participate.
I would, I would hope that they look to reconsider.
Are you allowed to tell us which department heads?
I mean, I...
I mean, just as a thing of transparency?
I can, I can, sure, I can, I just, I don't know that I really want to. If you order me to, I will, but I'd probably rather not right now.
No, hold up for right now.
But I guess, again, sort of where I was coming from is, you know, I haven't done reviews for virtually all of the staff yet, and I'm, I'm working on FY21 budget now. So I wasn't really going to hold anyone to account monetarily for that now. So I, I'm hopeful that everyone will ultimately agree to participate. But if they don't, then I would, I would say that for the FY22 budget, my, my recommendations on salary increases would be different for people that choose not to participate.
Yeah, how, how do you get a raise if nobody knows what, if you succeed within your department? I mean, that just makes no, doesn't make any sense to me at all.
No, just let me get this straight. If, if I got my department head to, are my people going to be evaluated by us or just, just department head itself is not going to participate? And they're not going to, the department head is not going to have goals and objectives or any of this stuff? But is the employee, the union employee that we signed the contract to, are we going to evaluate them as best we can within the system that they're working in?
Ultimately, they will be, the staff will be evaluated as well.
Okay, that's right.
But this right here, what I think, this is for department heads.
Yeah, all right.
I, I just, I don't know, I just keep going back to the, the how do you, how do you achieve a raise? How do you achieve any kind of monetary additional funding, you know, raise at, at any point if you don't know, if you have nothing to measure it against?
Right.
I mean, I, I know for, for example, my, my job, if I have a bad year, I'm not going to get a raise. If I have a really good year, I got approved, I have a good year, and I get a raise. And I get that, and I hear it all the time, that I'm in the private sector and people in the public sector operate differently. But we're not just printing money here, we're not just writing, finding checks to people. You know, you have to have some kind of measurable. And I know maybe the pushback is that they're, they're judged or they're reviewed every three years. I mean, if that's the case, then, you know, maybe their salary should be reviewed every three years. I don't know.
Oh, I mean, to that end, oh, I mean, I think we're all echoing really the same thing here, but on...
Just disappointing.
Yeah, it's frustrating. I mean, one of the things, I mean, in my opinion, like, as you just mentioned, Doug, I think those, those elected department heads who don't participate and refuse, oh, their salary should really reflect that. And, oh, and number two, I mean, I completely respect how you're trying to, I mean, oh, we're not the ones who work for these individuals on a, oh, on a day-to-day basis, so you, oh, you know, there's a lot of diplomacy you, oh, like, are having and, oh, you know, a two-year credit right now? But I think at some point, oh, you know, to Ms. Diamond's point, sometime in the near future, once, oh, you know, oh, at a point I don't want to, oh, you know, I mean, I don't think we should tell you when that is. But sometime in the future, oh, like in the near future, when you think the, oh, you've reached the end of the road, and, you know, they, all of these, these elected full-time officials is, oh, you know, oh, you know, they're dead set against it, like, I think providing a report, oh, you know, frankly, to our board and to the public, oh, you know, about all, all the departments who frankly are doing the right thing and they're, oh, you know, and they've bought into the direction that all of us are heading in, oh, as a town, oh, and then frankly, we share with the public, those elected department heads who haven't bought in, and, oh, you know, we get that out to the public.
We can easily put them on the agenda and ask them why.
Yeah, exactly. Call them out.
Once you've got whatever, you know, direction you want to go after tonight's meeting.
So the one thing I'll add to that is, so I hope it doesn't go down that road.
I hope not to.
I hope that the department heads that have chosen not to take it upon themselves to, to reevaluate and participate. This is not something to, that we're trying to implement to call out lack of performance or anything else. It's as a town, in a town that they quite frankly have chosen to, to run and work for, because my guess is they, they have an affinity for the town. So I hope that they reevaluate and, and become part of the process. If it goes down the road that, that they choose not to and, and we decide that those boards should be, those, those members should be identified, I don't think that, that should be something that Doug does.
No, no, we, yeah.
So I just want to, you know, he has to work with them.
Sure.
I think we put him in a, an extremely uncomfortable position. And if we do decide to do that, I think that has to come directly from the board.
I agree.
Well, you know, I think, Rich, too, I mean, you know, you and I, and Larry, you know, we've both sat on the finance committee, and, you know, one of the things that we go back and forth with is, you know, when we give a salary increase and you're justifying a salary increase, and one of the reasons that we kind of wanted to put this in there was so that we could make it easy and we could justify it and say, you know, employee A did this, this, and this, and these were their goals and these were their measurables, and, and everything came out, you know, according to what their plan was, and, you know, their raise is justified. How do you justify just giving a raise arbitrarily without having anything, anything with the goal in respect?
It was extremely difficult. It was why we, it was why we started to implement having the department heads coming down to try to get some information.
So this is made as a tool, a tool to help those departments?
I agree. So it all depends on how you look at it, though, I guess.
I guess.
You know?
I would, I would just caution against beating up on any elected official, per se.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I think that, you know, they're, they're, every three years, they have to run the gauntlet and somebody can take their job from them, just like that. And all you have to do is just be a popular person. And I think that if, if you're antagonistic toward the, toward the whole situation, rather than just, I don't have time to do that, and I don't think I need to do it, that type of business, then the voters will have their say. If they don't like, you know, if we don't like what they're doing and we're dissatisfied, I mean, if we go up here and, and people will know it around town, and they think that you will have somebody come out of the woodwork, that's a nice paying job.
Yeah.
They're fine paying jobs, both of them. And you don't, the only qualifications you need to do is to get fifteen hundred of your closest friends to vote for you. And you don't even have, have any education at all. You can still outstrip in that position, so.
That's where the charter comes in.
I would just, I would just, you know, they run the risk of losing everything by not cooperating with the new style of government that we're trying to implement here. And it's very difficult, when you say change, to people, they, you know, a lot of people go into neutral. You know, it's like a stepdad, like, change? I don't know, change? We can't change. We, this is the way we've always done things, even if we were wrong. And that's one of the most sickening statements anybody could ever make, make to me, is that this is the way we've always done it. But again, we have, Doug is new, he's there six months. Biz is new, she's here eight months. Jen is new, she's here, but she's here now. And people are getting used to what we're trying to implement, and you're going to have those people that resist change because it's change. So let's, before we, you know, get out the, the sculpt and start zeroing in on anybody who, they, they know who they are, they know what we want. We can apply some more subtle pressures and just say it's not to judge you, but to show the people of the town what your department is accomplishing, what makes your department so valuable to the town? I mean, what makes the clerk's job valuable? I mean, in the old days, the clerk was somebody who's really an, an important person in the town. I'll be honest with you, I, I never saw it. I never understood why the clerk thought they were so important. You know, they're just, you know, no more important than the treasurer or no more important than anybody else. It's a job. I mean, if you want, you can do, anybody can do the job. All you got to do is get fifteen hundred of your closest friends. So if you want to risk having somebody come out of the woodwork and try to take your job because they say they will, you know, this is how they want to run it in compliance with how the town is, the direction that the town is going in versus the old days, you know?
And if I can just add to that, you know, Larry, just continuing on your thought, you know, I wasn't looking to pull the pin on anything, and I have not identified what departments they are, and that's why I've kept, you know, two and a half percent for this year, because I did consider earlier for this budget, even though I haven't done the evaluations yet, knowing who has not cooperated with it, I could have recommended to you they get zeros, but I didn't wanna do that, I wanted to, you know, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, lead by example and persuasion, and, you know, let's, let's handle that over the next year, so that's why I haven't, I haven't identified that.
Yeah.
Yep. I think they know that we know.
Oh, they do now, I guess.
Well, they do, and so, and so, basically, all it does is, it just sends a message quite to everybody in town hall that, uh, we're only out to make the whole operation better. And I think that we are rapidly getting to that point, and we'll get there. And, and there'll be anchors along the way that we have to pull, and, and we will, and it'll just be one at a time, and, and, um, I think once everybody else is on board, if you will, then, then those people who are fighting the change will, uh, come around to see that it's, uh, nothing detrimental to them or their department, but it's only beneficial to their department and the town, not to us, but, uh, but to the, to themselves and the town. Because it's, ultimately, it's the town that we, we care about and not individuals, if it's, you know, and that's the way, and that's what we have to do, so.
I, I just think, you know, I, I just think it justifies the appropriation, uh, that somebody gets, and it's, it serves as backup documentation when, you know, at town meeting if somebody questions why somebody got a raise or somebody didn't get a raise, well, you know, they participated in the review process and, you know, this is, this is where we're at with that. And, uh, it's, it's a supporting document to, to their, their financials future in the town, and I don't understand why anybody wouldn't participate, especially if you're doing a really good job, and, you know, for the most part, as far as I can tell, they all are, so why wouldn't you want that to really highlight how good you're doing? Just me, but, anybody has anything else, we can, uh, we can move on. Nice good one. Alright, moving on. Uh, other new business, not reasonably anticipated. Doug, anything? Okay. Number five, old business, FY twenty-one budget.
Alright, so included in your packet I gave, an updated calendar, none of the real milestones changed, I just added in, I took off what's already happened. I added in that tomorrow, March fourth, um, I'll present this to the finance committee just so they have the latest and greatest. And I also added in the capital planning committee, um, on March fifth, sending to us and the finance committee their final capital plan. Uh, I changed the date of the next selectmen meeting, you're planning on moving that to March sixteenth.
Yep.
So that's when I'll send you what I hope will be the final budget, uh, for you to review and hopefully approve. Uh, then we'd send that to the finance committee on, uh, Wednesday, the eighteenth, and they'll make their final decisions, excuse me, recommendations in March twenty-fifth, then you guys sign the final warrant on April fourth. So I thought tonight I would just highlight, because we've been going over this for a while now, I thought I'd just highlight some of the changes. Um, the next page I believe you have is labeled, you know, certified free cash at the top, and it shows some of the uses of free cash, is that right? Do you have that? Okay. So, we're, you know, the numbers have been, we've been working, Biz and I have been working the numbers quite a bit to try to accomplish what we need to accomplish and, and still have a balanced budget. Uh, one of the things we did on the first page, you'll see, under use of free cash, uh, snow and ice deficit estimate, that was a much larger number last meeting, that was over five hundred and sixteen, seventeen thousand, so we've lowered that, uh, to account for the fact that it continues to be really mild. I know people might even ask, why do we even need this? But despite this mild winter, we're already, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in deficit, because every time they've gone out with, you know, it rains, it freezes, it warms up, they gotta go out again, you know, that all costs money. So what we have here, um, believe it or not, is tight, because, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand of this or so is already encumbered for, you know, expenses that we've already had, and the remainder, that one forty, one fifty, you know, we're crossing our fingers, is gonna be enough to bite us over until we're out of winter. You know, one, one big storm could eat that up, and then we'd have to, you know, pass over something at town meeting, but the way things have been going, knock on wood, you know, we'll be good with that. Up above, at that, that top category in the last version also, we had sixty-five thousand dollars coming out of free cash for a shortfall with utilities, so I do feel comfortable now removing that. So, just to explain, there's a, you know, we have a large solar project in town on the cap landfill, and it works a little differently, believe it or not, up here compared to where I was on the Cape, so we had a similar large solar project, and there's a different electric utility on the Cape at Eversource, so what they did, they would make it easy for large projects, they would do what they call just cashing it out, they literally just sent the town a check periodically, and you just got the cash, makes it easy, right? Up here, National Grid and the way state law works, it's up to the utility, they do not have to cash it out if they don't want to. So I've asked them nicely, I've asked them a little less nicely, I'd even begged a little bit, will you please just cash this out, and they won't do it. And so what, what Biz and I have sort of inherited is, we have this schedule where we have some accounts with huge credits with no amounts due, and then other accounts with large balances, large, large amounts due and no credits, and it, and I just can't move the money, right? So, so we, we escalated this quite a bit over the last couple of weeks. We reached an agreement with National Grid, will they let us do a one-time reallocation of credits? So we're moving money around from some of those accounts to other accounts to rebalance it as best we can. Then they have this schedule called the Schedule Z, where the state allows you two times a year to adjust it, that, that's the document that we submit to the utility, which allocates all the credits going forward. So in addition to the one-time reallocation of money, we've updated the Schedule Z to what we think more accurately reflect and better align costs with, with credits. So we're gonna, we're gonna keep a close eye on this, I don't know if there's some weird, I don't know how we got to this point, it could be that there's some, it hasn't been updated for a couple of years for obvious reasons, it was the town administrator's office controlled that project. It's possible there's some seasonality, maybe with the school buildings, they're the largest users, maybe in the summer, uh, we're, we're gonna keep an eye on it, but I, I feel confident that we have, uh, closed the gap on the current year, um, by taking these actions with National Grid and, and doing the one-time transfers, um, and we did them in a way where we think over the next couple of months, by June thirtieth, we will align ourselves better and have recovered the sixty-five or cost avoidance of the sixty-five thousand.
So we're going to have those, those accounts that have these huge credits?
Right, we'll, we'll have, we'll have much, much more rationally redistributed, and then going forward with the new Schedule Z that we filed, that will, that should also do it, and we're just gonna keep an eye on this. So that, that's why that sixty-five thousand isn't there. I said it in probably two minutes now, but that, this took a tremendous amount of work, it was just really, I mean, what's so frustrating is if National Grid would just agree to cash it out, it'd be done, we'd have no issues, but they don't wanna do that. Uh, we've increased the stabilization fund transfer, I, I mentioned that earlier, I think when we were talking about the warrant, uh, because of the changes with the, reducing the snow and ice deficit estimate and taking out the utility shortfall, we're able to fund a little bit more in capital down below, so we've added the fire department's admin vehicle replacement, we've added in a Parks Department tractor, um, I can't remember exactly which version at the, the last meeting I was at, but the recycling road repairs I talked about before is down to fifty thousand, at one point it was, you know, the much larger one eighty to do the whole thing over, another point, we took it out completely, we came up with this phased approach. And we also have a slightly higher number, I think, from the last version on the IT equipment upgrades, those backup devices, uh, and PCs. So on the use of free cash, um, those are the, those are the significant changes. There are no questions on that, moving, and moving over to the regular budget, um, probably one of the more significant, although not large, uh, you know, before I get to that, may I let us highlight, on the cover sheet, you'll see, this is a balanced budget, it's a four-hundred-and-twenty-one dollar deficit, which is, to say cutting it close is not even funny, so it's, you know, we're gonna be biting our nails, um, but, you know, I feel confident in this. One of the more significant additions that I've mentioned in prior presentations is the addition of a regulatory secretary, so if you look on the lower right corner, it's labeled six of twenty-nine under the Board of Selectmen, you'll see a line for regulatory secretary, which we're funding at twenty thousand dollars. So since our last meeting, I, I had a meeting with the chairman, at all at the same time, the chairman of the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and Conservation Commission, and what's, what's prompting this is, um, the person who has worked and volunteered for the town to staff the Zoning Board of Appeals is gonna be retiring during this fiscal year, she does a great job, and I got me a little bit panicked, because there's a lot of really important stuff that the ZBA is doing, one example of which are all these, you know, marijuana-related dispensaries that are coming before the board, and, you know, to put it really bluntly, you know, if we drop the ball on any kind of important application that comes in, something could be constructively approved, you know, and, and we're stuck with it, so it's really important we do these things right. And I've also had a number, you know, and I should also have started by saying, none of this, part of the recommendation reflects poorly on any of the board or committee members themselves, I appreciate everything they're doing, they're all doing an excellent job. What this relates to is the fact that they're hampered because they don't have any full-time or part-time, any town staff in the building that's dedicated toward their committees, so when customers come in from the outside, developers, attorneys, they need to talk to someone about filing an application, there's literally no one to talk to. We do have somebody in the assessing department who has a, a full-time job in assessing, who helps bridge that gap for the planning board only, we don't have anybody, you know, for zoning or conservation. So what this would do, my vision with this, is to fund a part-time position, an example might be fifteen hours a week, might be three hours a day, say nine AM to noon, something like that, have set office hours, anybody coming in, they could get an application for the respective board, ask questions, this person would follow up, make sure things completed fully, follow up with the chairs, make sure, uh, things get filed appropriately, legal notices, rebutters notices, et cetera. Would, would not affect the people that attend the night meetings, the, the secretaries that go to the night meetings to actually take the minutes, drop the decisions, that would all stay the same, this does not touch that, because those people often also generally have daytime jobs, so this is only to fill a gap that's not being filled at all during the day. All three chairman of those boards enthusiastically, uh, support this. So I'm, I didn't think I was gonna be able to accomplish that, uh, this year, but I'm pleased to say that, that we are. Next thing I wanted to highlight, if you look to page nine of twenty-nine, on the bottom under Conservation Commission, you'll see secretary, uh, that had been funded previously at five hundred dollars, we're bumping that up to forty-five hundred, that is for that nighttime secretary who's taking minutes, et cetera, at those meetings, not to be confused with the regulatory secretary I just mentioned. I have spoken with the chairman, excuse me, the chairman of the Conservation Commission about this, and I don't, I don't think it's appropriate that it was only funded at five hundred dollars, the person was working far in excess of that, so this is just to compensate somebody fairly for all the night meetings that they're, they're going to taking, taking minutes. Um, moving on to the Board of Health, gosh, did I maybe highlight before that, that the Fire Department, which is page fifteen of twenty-nine, I've actually lowered the Fire Chief's salary compared to what I had previously recommended, so it does not reflect a reduction from his current salary, I had...
Overstated.
Yeah, well, I know, it's just, I didn't realize that he, he has a contract which goes out for another year, and in his contract, and I should say, you know, this is him being a, a good guy as a taxpayer, in his contract, he, he asked for and took zeros. So he has zero in his contract, I thought his contract was expiring, so I was putting in at two and a half like everybody else, he has a contract, the contract says zero, so it's going in at zero. Um, the next I wanted to highlight was the Board of Health, I'm just trying to find that, Biz probably knows the account numbers, five-ten, she knows them all off the top of her head, it's kinda scary. So if you go to account five-ten...
Page twenty.
Yeah, Board of Health, so...
Twenty-four.
Um, so, this one's a little bit confusing to look at, because part of what we're doing here is we are, um, offsetting some of the salaries in the Board of Health office, the Health Department, we're offsetting some of their salary expenses from the revolving fund, because much of their time is spent doing work associated with the revolving fund, so the numbers look kinda screwy. Um, but I am gonna update one thing here, so this is one of the salaries I talked about previously, a couple departments that I feel were just out of whack compared to looking at comps with other towns at the level of work they're doing as department heads, so this particular department head is currently funded at sixty thousand dollars, so we did a, a comp study looking at, um, similar-sized towns within our region, and it confirmed that sixty thousand dollars is too low, is very low.
Exactly the lowest.
Yeah, it's, it's not appropriate for a department head position, and is actually significantly less than some administrative positions that are...
Four thousand dollars lower than the lowest town, so...
So if you were to do all the math, which you can't even really see here, what I had plugged in here was, again, based on the comps, sixty-eight thousand dollars, but based on some additional information I have, uh, I'm gonna recommend putting that up to seventy with that additional two thousand dollars being funded from the revolving fund. So, um, in essence, this salary will go up as, call it a market correction, um, to be more in line with what, what this salary should be, it's gonna go from sixty to seventy. And similarly, uh, with the Youth Commission Director, which is the next page, twenty-one of twenty-nine, five forty-two, uh, that's another one where this was a department head position making fifty-eight thousand dollars, uh, which was something that caught my eye immediately, um, we ran the comps, and, um, a much more appropriate salary for, and again, all of these are based on the position, not personalities, not the people, it's based on the position, what they're doing, what their responsibilities are, so that I have recommended up to seven, not up to, increasing to seventy thousand. So those, those two are two, two accomplishments that we're able to do in this budget, which I think are important.
And that was to Doug's point, uh, another one where, where Stacy ran the comps for us, and the salary of, you know, Parks and Rec Director, uh, which is what is titled in most towns, to Doug's point, was significantly lower, it was the four, uh, this community was the absolute bottom of all those other communities.
Right.
Uh, so this is, to Doug's point, another market correction, uh, to get them more in line, uh, it's still not, I don't even know if it's even at the median yet, uh, so it's not on the high end, it's, it's, I think, just below the median for that salary, so, for that position.
Right. Um, I should have probably highlighted at the, at the beginning, just overall on the revenue side, one of the, one of the other things that we're doing to help balance the budget, and I, Biz and I have an expression that we use with each other when we kind of wrangle over, um, you know, how much we're doing one way or another, we call it arm wrestling, so my bicep's pretty strong now, because she's making me work for it, but we arm wrestle daily over the budget, and, and we've taken as much as we feel comfortable from the OPED Trust Fund to help offset some of the retiree health expenses, so that's just another thing I wanted to highlight that we're doing, um, there's just a lot of different variables at play. Um, so that number on the left side on, on page one, uh, transfer from OPED Trust looks a little bit higher than, uh, the previous version. But those are really the highlights of the changes from the last iteration that I gave you, and this, I feel, and I think I speak for Biz, we both feel, is sort of our first real comprehensive, like, we think we're good, like, we think we have a good, comprehensive, balanced budget with reasonable revenue projections that are conservative, we're not, you know, being too aggressive, which is, could bite us at a special town meeting next year, we wanna avoid any budget corrections next May, we don't wanna see that happen, um, so we're trying to be conservative, but not being so conservative that we don't make any inroads and don't get anything done, so we're, you know, there's, there's some areas that we wanted to more appropriately budget that we're just not able to fund, an example of that was contractual buyouts, storm water line item, snow and ice, you know, these are some big, we just don't have the funding right now to do that, but that, those are things on our radar, we're gonna continue to try to better budget in the future, um, but we are correcting a couple department head salaries, we're adding in a regulatory secretary, we're funding probably around nine hundred thousand dollars of capital out of free cash in a lot of important areas, so I think we're, I, I think we're in a good space, so I'd, I'd welcome any feedback you have, any comments, any requested changes you might have, I do plan on sharing this, and with any changes you might have tonight with the finance committee tomorrow, then we'd regroup in two weeks for the, for the final budget.
Mike? Um, I just wanna say really quick, oh, oh, I really, congratulations, um, oh, to you, Doug, to Biz, to Jen, um, like, everyone involved in this, I know, oh, you know, and frankly, I'm going through the same, oh, I think in my job, right, oh, at the moment, with your first budget, oh, you know, I mean, all I can inherent, oh, you know, how much pride you take in, oh, really resetting the thing and making, all I can presenting, oh, like, a manageable document that works, that, oh, addresses all of our, oh, really collective priorities and those of, like, all of our departments, and I know, all, each of you have probably had, oh, really many sleepless nights to get here, uh, because that's just what you do, and it's just, oh, the nature of the beast, but, um, I just wanna say congratulations.
Thank you, I think this is, I think we're on version twelve internally, just, you know, like, literally, like, version twelve, and it had, to your point, Mike, I do always, everybody struggles with how much detail to give a board, you know? I don't wanna give you too little and you feel like you don't know what's happening, but I could bore you to death and take hours, but, you know, it's just too much, you don't need that for your level, you know, policy level, so if you ever feel like you need more or less information, just, just let me know. And I should also highlight that it's, you know, it's not just me and it's not just Biz, it's, it's the team, you know, Jen's involved, uh, the assessor, uh, the collector, and the treasurer are also in... Jen's involved, the assessor, the collector, and the treasurer are also involved. And so from the very beginning, when we're looking at our revenue estimates, we did that as a team, with our financial team, what makes sense. And, you know, John's telling us, you know, how much he thinks, you know, is appropriate that he's gonna get on interest. And Deb's telling us what's an appropriate amount for new growth. I mean, it's, everybody's contributing to the assumptions, and that's key.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Perfect. I've been hanging around probably the longest, and this is beautiful. This is really, you know, it's been discussed and discussed and discussed, probably more times already than any other budget that we've ever passed in our history, for the detail and getting everything straight in the way. So this is perfect. This is not too much for the, for those people who like to chew on this stuff, there's plenty of information for you to go over everything and scrutinize it. And for the guy who, bottom line guy like me, it's, you tell me everything is balanced, everything is gonna be, you know, okay, if you will, this equals this. If this equals this, then we're all good. And the town will be in great shape and be doing a great job. And all this information, not too much, and it's really not too little. It's appropriate for the intensity that we have to, we have to apply to it also. So, and to discuss it, I'd say ad nauseam, but it isn't. You know, it's, it shows that, you know, we're, A, everybody's on top of it, B, basically everybody in town hall is working together to get that, you know, get it done. And, yeah, nothing but really good stuff all the way around town hall about how you guys are approaching the issues. And, you know, you're gonna get, always gonna get a little bit of, you know, I don't like, maybe I don't like this, or maybe I don't like that, but most people in town are good, hard-working people, and they, and they like the direction that the town is going in and keep it going.
I appreciate you saying that, Larry, and I should have highlighted, again, this is another example, we talked about performance evaluations and personnel policies. You know, this is a different process than what's happened in the past, and so it's, and it's changed, it is different.
Yeah, news is not always nice.
And it's not that everything was wrong before, you know, the town managed to, you know, get along all these hundreds of years, and we're at where we're at now. But, so I appreciate what you said, and I also just wanna recognize that it is challenging for staff having different timelines and deadlines and processes, but I feel like we're moving in the right direction.
I know. So, you know, from my perspective, I love to see that the town administrator has been so active and involved. You know, I go back a little more than 10 years now on the FinCom, and then just recently on the Board of Selectmen, and that had not been the history. So I appreciate that. And also, when we were looking to put this new team together, I think the goal, or the wish, more than anything, was to put together a team that truly worked and functioned well and really reached out to build relationships with the department heads. And this process that you guys have undertaken just kind of solidifies, you know, what my personal hope was when this all came about, was that we have put together a team that truly, that we truly have put together a team that is working very, very well together, that is engaging and including the department heads. And while we're going through a lot of change, and anytime you do that, it can be unsettling, overall, the feedback has been very, very good. And my hat's off to the three of you on how you guys have come in and approached this and have really taken ownership of this, so I just wanna say thank you.
I appreciate you saying that, and I realize I always run the risk, when I mention one person's name, I forget somebody else's, and I was thinking, I mentioned them, and I mentioned Deb, and I mentioned John, but I did mention Judy, and of course Judy helps in our financial team meetings as well, helping us forecast local receipts and the rest. So don't wanna exclude anybody, because it truly has been a team effort.
I'll just reiterate what everybody else said. This is, for me, has been the easiest budget season I've had in the last--
Ten years.
Ten years. You guys have really limited my anticipation to a point where I'm comfortable with it, and you guys balance the budget, something I never did. So I appreciate it, guys. All right. All right, on to the next item on the agenda, other old business, not reasonably anticipated. Okay, Town Administrator's Report and Correspondents.
Yes, I will keep it quick. As evidenced by the meeting earlier tonight, working on the budget in the town meeting has really taken up the bulk of my time over these last few weeks. Sue Ives in my office is finalizing the annual town report, which she'll be sending out to the printer tonight after we take your photo to include in the, no, at the board. All five of you, yeah.
That won't come out well.
Yeah, so we'll take their photo, and that'll go in. Coronavirus, I know it's ironic that I'm talking about that as I'm coughing over here, but I assure everyone, I don't have a fever, and I'm not, I'm not that sick, I have a sinus infection. But there's a lot going on. We have put links on the town Facebook page, Twitter page, on the website, Board of Health as well, to various resources with the State Department of Public Health, they're working closely, getting information from the CDC. So as we get information, we'll inform the public. I'm also obviously keeping in close touch with the health agent about it and her board. I'm also jumping on a conference call tomorrow that one of the, one of our neighboring town managers initiated, for all the South Shore town managers, we're gonna hop on a call together tomorrow, just to see what everybody else is doing, how they're preparing, just to make sure we're all aware of just things to be prepared for in case we have to close buildings, close offices, things like that. So, you know, the thing that I heard recently on the radio from some experts is not to panic, there's no reason to panic now, but we should be thinking about preparing. And so that's what we are trying to do. Two other quick ones, we did issue the RFP to sell the town-owned parcel on Waymouth Street. That's at the corner of Waymouth and Abington Streets. It's a very small parcel of land that was, we acquired from a discontinuance of the road when the road was refigured. Beds are due on April 6th. We did include a minimum price of $4,500, and that RFP is available on the town website if anybody's interested. And lastly, we are continuing to work with our architects on the McKinley School feasibility study, and we're gonna stay on schedule. You will have a final report by the architect, completed with cost estimates by the last meeting in April. That's all I have.
Thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda, Selectmen Comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members. You're not necessarily collect the views of the Board of Selectmen, and of the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Mullen.
I wanna go home, so I don't have anything.
Excellent. Ms. Nyman.
I just wanna remind everyone that Restaurant Week is this week, till March 7th. There's a lot of good restaurants participating, and a lot of good deals and specials, so I'd encourage everyone to check it out.
Thank you, Kara. Mr. Penny.
Congratulations to the Boys and Girls Basketball Team. Girls are in the South Sectional Finals, that's Friday night at 5:30 at Taunton. The Boys are playing tonight in Taunton versus Norton. I'm trying to get an update. My daughter just said horrible, so that's not good news. We don't have an exact score, but hopefully they can come back. If they win, they will be playing Saturday in Taunton.
I just got a text from our cable affiliate here, and they said the Boys lost.
Oh, is it done? No. Yeah, well, congratulations anyway. They had a good year.
Thank you, Rich. Larry?
I'm going home, too.
Okay. So like Kara said, Restaurant Week is currently in the middle of it. It runs to March 7th. A couple of the restaurants started off a little bit slowly. Rock and Bar and Grill started up tonight, and they released their menu earlier today. It was pretty good. So get out there and support your local businesses. I also just wanted to make a note about our next meeting. Doug referenced it briefly earlier, we're moving it from March 17th to March 16th, so that the members could support Ms. Nyman and the 29th Annual Nyman St. Patrick's Day Dinner. So with that, I want to take a motion to adjourn.
Do we need a second session? For purposes of negotiation for the town administrator, review and approve executive minutes from February 18th, 2020, with, not to reconvene.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Okay.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Mullen.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And myself, that's affirmative. Thank you, good night.
Thank you.